Okay, welcome. Let's rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome. I will call the meeting to order. And we need agenda approvals or any additions or corrections?
The, um, I'm sorry, the financials for the HRA were added just this morning.
I could not get them open. Could you guys get them open?
I guess I didn't see them.
Oh, okay.
So I sent, I forwarded them to you in email last night.
Yeah, that's the one I, oh, I missed them this morning then.
And then we, and then we attached them to the agenda, so they're, they're here. Um, I just wanted to make note that they weren't in the published, they're, they're published now, but they weren't in the published version on Thursday.
Okay.
And Ted, I think you're aware of this because I mentioned it to Steve, I looked under the, P and L and the general fund balance at 1.635 million. That's kinda, we had questioned if that must be a posting error. So look into that, make sure it gets addressed.
And I sent an email to that effect.
Okay.
To, to HRDC, and you'll get a copy of it as well.
Okay.
And a lot of those funds are restricted.
Okay.
I, I looked at the financials, no, I, I'm not saying that that's correct, I'm just saying a lot of the funds are restricted.
It's almost like an asset got put in there.
Okay.
Yeah, and Jeff, I just got your, it looks like E fifty-five this morning.
Because I was looking at that, and if that's the case, we wouldn't have a problem taking care of.
And then, do we need to, do we need to remind them because we had asked for them by the Thursday before?
And, and I had them, and I, and they sat in my email box.
Oh, okay, alright.
The, the new, Rhonda's getting them done on time.
Okay, alright, thank you.
So I'll approve the agenda.
Okay, Dave moves, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, anyone here for public comment? I don't believe so. Um, does anybody want to pull anything from the consent agenda? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, Ted moves.
Second.
Tom seconds, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I would just ask, um, the auditor warrants and commissioner warrants had a different format with more data on them this time?
Yeah, it was really nice.
I'm assuming you all noticed that, but I'm hoping that you found that helpful?
Yes. Yeah.
That's accountability.
It's kinda like when I see the, those financial reports and the dollar figures, it's like, okay. But if I don't have the current, the invoice, I'm assuming that that's correct, you know, but it's, it's nice to have that information.
Plus it saves on questions.
Or, and sometimes it's raised questions.
Yeah, that's true too.
It may, it may bring up other questions, but I think more information is better.
And Kay's always been good, it came from her, whoever.
Mike, do you want to come and do employee recognition, please?
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
So in terms of county employee recognition today, in the sheriff's office, we have Caleb Arrola, he's a dispatcher jailer, began the part-time position on June twelfth. Larry Henberg, dispatcher jailer, is recognized for service from April nineteenth, twenty eleven, to June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. And Steve Nysley, deputy sheriff, began the part-time position on June seventh. In solid waste, John Isens, a solid waste worker in reuse, began the seasonal position on June tenth. And Tristan Weemis, solid waste worker reuse, began the temporary position on June tenth.
Thank you, Mike. Do you, do you know how many positions are currently open at the county, you or Gina?
We have, seven-ish, seven-ish probably.
Okay.
I just posted just now, just for another part-time dispatcher.
Okay, are they mostly in, um, solid waste and the jail or?
Um, no, there aren't any more in solid waste, correct, Josh? One more? Oh, yes, um, a communication specialist. But for the most part, they're in the jail, in, in, in law enforcement, yes.
Okay, okay, alright, thank you, Mike.
And then physicians that are just in the process of hiring through.
Correct.
Okay, okay. Well, there's nothing today for highway survey, so Corey, you get to be first. Corey, before you start your report, we had that, uh, taxation meeting last night.
Okay.
For valuation.
Sure.
And we were trying to recall on the last, um, um, auction, wasn't there some of the toy shed property, wasn't, do you remember?
Yeah, yep, down by Hubbard.
Yeah, so part of that is privately owned, and then there's a section that was tax forfeited, correct?
Yes, and that just sold on the last auction.
It did, because we didn't have any bids here, right? Did someone come in?
Nope, it, there was bid up here.
Oh, I missed that, it was actually here, okay.
Yep, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so, just one item for the, the agenda today, um, to review and approve fourteen timber appraisals for the July eighth, two thousand twenty-four timber auction. Uh, there's fourteen tracks of timber, and ten thousand one hundred and ninety-two cords valued, the, the appraise value is two hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety cents. And I'm, this is the third out of four auctions scheduled for this year, and I'm just looking for approval. And there was no landowner issues or access issues that I know of yet, so. There was one pipeline crossing that the forester did contact the pipeline, and they're working out a, approved access route for that, so it should go well.
I noticed that it almost seemed like the, the, if I, if I understood the picture correctly, it almost looked like they were with the pipelines.
Yep, so there's a pipeline, they're gonna, there is designated crossing areas where they'll be able to drive truck, trucks over the pipelines.
Okay, thank you.
And is there anybody having trouble accessing what they want to cut now because of the rain?
I haven't had too many calls lately, but I could see, I could see things picking up, uh, people starting to get worried, so. Last night I woke up and it's like, oh no, we're gonna have another, another windstorm.
Eight and a half.
Yeah, yep, so, uh, the, the employees are out checking roads right now and, um, making sure things are cleaned up.
I noticed one of the loggers up by me on one of their boom trucks or whatever, the two rear tires had tracks on them. So I'm assuming they're just using that to go out in the woods and then bring it back to a landing.
Yeah, especially if it's hilly, they'll put, they'll put tracks or chains on their tires to be able to get up the terrain.
Because of the wet conditions or what was going on there, but.
Mostly they're on there for winter time when it's icy, but, um, yeah, if it's, if it's steep terrain, they'll put them on too.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have any blown down timber from that last one?
Not that we saw, no, um, but we're just still trying to clean up from a couple of years ago, so that impacted quite a bit.
We had three trees down across the township road this morning.
Yeah.
Must have been really windy during the night.
Yep, yeah, it's one thing you, with this position, you worry about when you hear, hear wind, you start to worry.
Does anybody have any questions on the proposed auction product, um, tracks?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Ted?
I'll second.
Two seconds, is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, have a good week.
Thanks, Corey.
Alright, I have a couple, um, agenda items for you today, and Ted, I don't know if you want me, I can share some for, from yesterday's.
I just talked to them this morning about, uh, you doing one of my committee reports for the Foston, so thank you.
Alright, um, so the first item I have is to haul and supply granular fill at the south transfer station. Due to our final cover project that we had last year, we kind of depleted all of our onsite soils that we had to use for, um, monthly cover and also for future cover, um, of other phases of the landfill. Uh, we have a very little stockpile right, onsite right now, um, not really enough to be able to manage, um, month-to-month cover needs. So we need to look at, um, purchasing some intermediate cover, um, and having that onsite for our operations. So we, uh, sent out for, advertised for quotes for this project, um, and reached out to a few contractors, um, and received two quotes. The low quote being Gladen Construction, that's seven dollars and thirty-nine cents a yard, and that would be delivered, so, um, includes the price of the material and, and them hauling it to our facility. And in my quote specs, I put up to ten thousand yards, um, in looking at the prices that we got back and, and trying to estimate how much we're gonna need, to kind of get us through to the next time we do a final cover project, uh, my recommendation is to go with seventy-five hundred yards, at this time, and then kind of look at reevaluating, reevaluating, um, next year and future years to see if we're gonna have to, um, purchase more to have onsite, uh, at that time, but, um, my recommendation would be to, um, approve seventy-five hundred yards to Gladen Construction, who was the low quote, um, at seven thirty-nine a yard.
Josh, was this planned for in your budget?
Um, this wasn't specifically budgeted for, um, during budget season last year. Um, I do have much funds, you know, available within our, you know, just within our solid waste fund. But we kind of, again, running into, um, after budget season last year, we did the final cover project and had to utilize all of our stockpile, which we weren't anticipating, so, um, that kind of brings up the need for this, so.
Board wishes?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, Dave moves?
I'll second.
Steve seconds, is there any further discussion? For the low quote?
Yes.
Yep, okay, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Alright, thank you, and the next item I have is, uh, to review and approve quotes that we received for concrete crushing, um, and this would be at our south landfill. Um, we're required by our MPCA permits to crush our recycled concrete piles periodically, um, which is every three years. We have, but did budget this, uh, to do this project in twenty twenty-four, and, uh, have obtained quotes, which were really challenging this go-around. But we have an estimated six thousand yards of material at the south transfer station. Uh, the quotes received were, um, quotes that are per ton, which would be going over their, their scale, um, when they crush. So it's, uh, kind of between a one point four and one point six factor that we have to kind of multiply the yardage by, so. I'm estimating we have anywhere between ten and fifteen thousand tons of material onsite, um, and, so we received two quotes for this project, uh, both quotes, they'd be pulling out the, the metal during the crushing, and the material at the end product would be the, the one inch minus, um, really close to those class five specs. Other things to note, I guess, is, yeah, you know, the last time we crushed, I think it was in, was it twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one, I think, um, and we ended up crushing about seventeen thousand yards, I think, and we probably are getting down to only about a thousand, or maybe a couple thousand yards left, so. I mean, we have been able to sell that material, and, um, it's been a good, good product, um, for people to use, so. My recommendation is to award the low quote to TNT Construction Group out of Grand Rapids. Um, their price was six dollars and twenty-five cents a ton, plus eighteen thousand dollar mobilization cost. Uh, factoring in that mobilization cost with the, um, estimated tons that we'd have, um, their quote would be, um, quite a bit less than the second quote we, we received. You know, biggest thing with them is they're, um, would kind of be last on their schedule for this year, so it'd be a, you know, a late fall, winter project, or it could possibly get pushed in the next spring, but, um, I think for the, um, the price, uh, we can, can wait and, and if we have to, we might just not have much of a stockpile left to sell to residents, um, the remainder of the year, depending on how fast the rest of our supply goes, so. And TNT Construction Group, they were the company that did our cover project, uh, last fall. Uh, so we, you know, I think, uh, we were happy with their cover project and seemed like a, seems like a good reputable company to, to do business with, too, so.
I, I did the numbers and that is surprising. Do we make money then on the crushed concrete when we sell it?
Um, so right now, we're selling it for twelve dollars a yard, um, which the last time we crushed, we were making a little bit of money on it, but, you know, I think that's something we'll have to evaluate, you know, after we get this crushed and we get the final, uh, payments in to see if we can keep our price at twelve dollars a yard, or if we want to look at increasing that when we do our fee increases next year, so.
Do you sell it directly to consumers? Because I, I bought some once, but it was through that place on thirty-four though.
Uh, residents, residents or contractors, you know, anyone could come in and.
Yeah, and it comes in and gets themselves.
Yep, I mean, we even, you know, most of the time, they'll have a dump trailer or dump truck, but, I mean, sometimes people even are, you know, we sell it by the, you know, people take a dozen buckets of it, too, so.
Are you looking to break even or, or make money?
Um, I think the biggest thing is to break even, but I think there is a balance there to, you know, to see what the market conditions are for the price and, and have it at a reasonable rate, too, so. But I think that, again, that's, I think, a discussional we'd want to have during, when we're looking at setting fees for next year, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the low quote.
I'll second.
Alright, Tom and Steve, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Alright, thank you, and the next, uh, or just the update I have, uh, yesterday, we had our solid waste advisory board meeting in Foston. And we have, uh, just a couple highlighted points to discuss, um, so year-to-date reports, um, going through January through May, overall, the tonnages for the whole facility, which includes six counties, are close to twenty twenty-three volumes. Our waste in Hubbard County, um, is up again through May. Um, I didn't look at the exact percentages, but it was, it was probably two to three percent above last year's volumes again. Um, recycling markets at the facility, or I guess recycling markets, um, are kind of getting back towards normal. Uh, the, towards the end of last year, they, they really tanked and, and were looking pretty bleak, but they're back kind of towards, uh, averages. So, so far, the recycling, uh, revenues have already, um, matched the revenues from twenty twenty-three, which is good. It's not, um, what was budgeted for, um, this year, but it, they've, you know, actually already met, uh, met it from last year's numbers, so. That is a positive, uh, steam sales, um, are down some, uh, but the prices and budgets are tracking okay to, uh, meet the budget target for the year. And they're gonna be looking at doing contract renewals, uh, with their steam customers in twenty twenty-five.
So why, I, I, is production less at the places that are using steam, or why is that down?
You know, it's, it's really variable, um, they have, uh, one of the customers is, production is down, I think they're drawing less steam, which is, uh, probably the biggest concern with the numbers. The other ones are kind of, um, tracking where they normally do, and, um, in twenty twenty-four, they made some adjustments to help the facility to kind of manage the peaks and the lows with sales, so that's why revenues are still kind of on target. Um, but there is one steam customer that hasn't been, uh, producing or needing as much steam, so. That'll be a thing to, to track moving forward, but, um, and then with the contract renewals, you know, they keep trying to, um, address, address concerns to make it beneficial both for the steam customer and also for the facility to, um, kind of manage revenues, so. The waste, uh, to energy facility there in Foston is going through a waste composition study. They're going through, um, what's called a RADA, which is a test on their stack, uh, big stack where the, the emissions go, to test, to test for the emissions going out of there, um, and that's a required study they have to do, um, periodically. And they're also gonna be participating in PFOS testing as part of a group with the other waste energy facilities in Minnesota. And that will have a cost with it, but will be kind of shared between all of the other, all of the facilities within the state. The, uh, landfill, um, they've been going through, had many challenges over the last few years with wetland permits and protected, uh, plant species, um, that's on the site. They've addressed all of those and are, have awarded construction for the next sale, which is needed, um, to construct this year to be able to keep accepting waste there. So, um, they're looking to start that project in July, which will help to, help us not to have any service interruptions. And they're still going through permitting issues, uh, with the facility. Um, the other, I guess, highlights at the meeting, um, we, which we discussed quite a bit, were, uh, related to, you know, that, uh, EPR language, legislative language, and other legislative updates that happened, um, this past session. Discuss some of the grants that we've been applying for. Polk County did receive, uh, one grant so far, which will help to, uh, process, uh, glass and, um, will be, in essence, help to process glass and pull out, uh, more recycling out of that, kind of the smaller waste stream, which will help to, um, increase revenues in the, the facility as well, so.
So I have a question on the glass, so, old dishes, are those recyclable, or is it just the, like, the clear glass?
Just the clear glass, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Other glassware and stuff should just be going in the regular, regular garbage, so. Um, let's see, and then, I guess, the biggest thing, and I think, I'm not sure, I think Ted, you were, had to leave before this, but we did discuss our tip fees. Uh, so currently, we're paying eighty dollars a ton, um, to go to our, to go to the facilities to dispose of our, um, waste at the waste energy facility in the landfill, um, due to, you know, the, everything that's been going on with the facility that we've, I think, discussed in past meetings, whether it's the recycling markets or, um, issues with the landfill and increased costs with that project, and also Becker County, um, not bringing in about ten thousand yards of anticipated, or tons of anticipated waste this year, um, they are needing to raise tip fees. So what was decided at the meeting yesterday is that tip fees are going to increase at the facility, um, starting July first, and they're gonna go to eighty dollars a ton, which will be a five dollar per ton increase. And then, um, kind of for budgeting for next year, looking at, um, raising tip fees an additional two dollars and fifty cents for twenty twenty-five, so that would end up in a tip fee of eighty-seven fifty per ton. So kind of what that looks like, um, you know, it's hard to know exactly, exact numbers based on our yardage, but, you know, we're looking at having, um, possibly about a fifty thousand dollar impact for the remainder of this year for, um, the tipping fee increases, so.
Josh, one thing that was talked about yesterday, that, where they had applied for, uh, I believe it was a eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, and they were granted three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the sheet rock processor recycler. I liked what John was saying about still trying to make it work. I guess part of the process is you gotta keep the sheet rock dry, whether before you're processing it and after. It sounds like they may have a, a building available there, so that would help with some of the costs, does that look?
What do they do with it?
It, it turns it into a, well, there's the, the powder part then.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure if that's then could be recycled as more gypsum or sheet rock, or?
Well, so the, yeah, the, uh, one grant, um, Polk County had applied for three grants, we had applied for one. One we applied for wasn't funded, Polk County had got the one glass-funded project, and then about half the funding requested for the, um, sheet rock recycling. So the recycled sheet rock or gypsum powder, um, would be marketed to this biochar company, North Star Lime in Crookston, where they would use it, um, more than likely pelletize it and put it in as a soil amendment, so. Um, it's used, used to put back into the soil for, you know, in the little fertilizer and things like that, so.
And then the, the pap, the paper backing and that, it made it into just little chunks, little sheets or whatever, pieces of paper, and then that can be composted even.
Yep, if it's new drywall, it can be composted, or it can be, you know, processed through the facility, so.
So this is all new sheet rock, just the leftover sheets, because not the painted?
Um, they can do the, um, all of it, you know, do the stuff that comes out of buildings, too, but I think most of us, we don't really have the capability of doing that level of sorting at this point, so.
Yeah, because it just gets thrown here.
So, yeah.
It's nice to see that there's a possibility.
Yep.
A market maybe even to, to get rid of some of this garbage.
So after the, yeah, after the meeting, we discussed that a little bit further, and there's a couple, um, additional things Polk County is looking into to see if it's feasible or not, um, you know, it makes it a lot less feasible, and we don't, they only received half the funding amount. But John is pretty, typically pretty sharp and able to kind of make adjustments, and we'll see if we can make something work with that, but. And we're set up really good in Park Rapids, uh, we're already diverting a lot of our new sheet rock, um, into the, our garbage stream, trying to get that out of the land, the demo landfill to begin with. So I think for us, it wouldn't be, um, much of a change to our operation, but the other counties, where it goes directly into the landfill, it's, it's a different story, too, so.
Wow. So then you, you must have to hold it in a building?
Yeah, the big challenge with that is it has to pretty much, uh, as far as, uh, possible, stay dry, so. We either, buildings or having a covered containers would be more, more likely, so.
I have a recycling question. For, uh, locations like our HOA, if they've got a bin that a contractor comes and empties every once, every once a week, if people are putting their regular garbage in bags and then throwing boxes in there, is, are those boxes lost to recycling, or do they get separated somehow?
Um, yeah, I mean, they, if it's going in the regular garbage dumpster, they're probably just going through the waste stream. I mean, there is, when garbage goes through the waste energy facility in Foston as garbage, they are able to recover some of the recycling, so. It's a possibility, some of the cardboard and more, more likely the metal is getting pulled out of there, but, you know, paper and plastic typically are the ones that are definitely not being recycled out of the garbage.
I want to bring it up at our next HOA meeting and, and let them, I wanted to have a little, something to tell them, so. Some, a lot of it is gonna be lost to recycling then, if they put it in there?
Yeah, I mean, unless it's a designated recycling collection, I mean, it's, it's not, I, generally, it's not preferred and isn't, most of it's not gonna get, or a large portion of it's not gonna get recycled, so.
Could you get a small bin to put beside that for recycling?
Well, that's what we're gonna have to do. I bring my own stuff in.
Yep.
I put my garbage in that thing, but I bring my own recycled stuff, there's many who aren't.
Right, it's too much of a bother for them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Ah, but that's all I had, so unless you guys have any other questions?
Ted mentioned this morning, he would like to tour the landfill up there, if you ever get something like that organized, I would love to be a part of that. I bought, I've gone through the facility, that was really interesting.
Okay.
And, and when I was on the board, they were just getting going with the new landfill, so.
You'll see before and after.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, with that, all the stuff we got going on regionally, I think, you know, there's hopefully gonna be a lot of, a lot of things we'll be able to share and tour around, too, which will be really, really cool, so.
Okay.
Can you tell me what counties, uh, are, have their, have their landfill or their garbage going to Foston?
Uh, yep, uh, Hubbard, Beltrami, Clearwater, Polk, Norman, uh, Norman and Menomonee.
But not Cass?
No.
Do you know where Cass goes?
Um, not specifically, but I believe they go, uh, they might go down to Elk River, they're probably going down to the Minneapolis area.
Is that similar to Foston?
Um, I guess I'm not, I'm not sure.
I, I, isn't Foston the state of the art in the, in the state?
Yeah, I mean, Foston- Yeah, I mean, Foston, in a lot of the facilities, other waste energy facilities are, are, have funding and now to kind of revamp their facilities towards Foston, um, Foston's specs, so it is pretty, I think, does, um, one of the best jobs of being able to handle all waste that comes into it, so.
People are just amazed at what we do in Hubbard County with our garbage.
I, I was able to tour that with.
Yes, you were, yeah.
And just amazed and fascinated. And I think all of the counties that go to Foston are, are really blessed to have the facilities that we do.
Absolutely.
Yeah, several positive comments over the weekend from people from the cities that have cabins up here that.
Yeah, even, even when you go out here, it's truly amazing.
I'm surprised at the volume that's at the transfer station all the time when I go there. It's really surprising. It's almost like the facility's too small.
Yeah, I mean, looking at it, I mean, I think that is concerns that we're gonna have to keep dealing with in the future, um. You know, our, our guys went to training over in Morehead at their brand new transfer station in Morehead, uh, this spring, and, you know, traffic at that transfer station's probably a, you know, a quarter of what we have in our facility, or maybe even smaller, so.
Well, even three hundred people going through Henrietta Mall every day, I mean, that's just astounding.
But it's how our, how our system is set up, you know, where it's very convenient for residents, where a lot of other transfer stations around the state are geared just for commercial traffic, so.
Cass's waste stream goes south.
I live in Cass, and I, I dread having to go to the transfer stations.
All their trucks go south with their loads. I don't know where they go. Somebody said Little Falls or Elk River.
Yeah, it's, it's Elk River and I think Recycle America or something down in the cities does their recycling, but. It's part of our group, but, I mean, we're looking at, you know, possibly working with them in the future too, so.
We've talked about this many times. My sister was gonna take garbage yesterday, lives in Ottertail. It's per, you know, they still pay per load. That deters people from.
Yeah, I, I pay through my tax statement, but then I still have to pay when I go to the.
Oh, really?
Dump.
Oh, interesting.
And then I use the red bags for my garbage pickup.
Even just fall cleanup, like, fall cleanup in Douglas County was harder than here by tenfold.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Kay.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I have a order approving an annexation to the City of Park Rapids from Todd Township. It's for one parcel. And as I understand it, this, uh, is at the request of the property owner, and there may be more. Uh, but so far, this is only for one property, um, and it's, um, I believe so that that property can get on, um, city utilities, and that's why there may be more to follow. Um, so we need to set a public hearing, um, because it's a new annexation.
So Kay, my question, I'm looking at the order approving annexation, and it said to correct the legal description in the joint resolution. So, do you know, is the wording changing just because they're annexing in, or was it? That just caught my eye. Maybe it's not even relevant.
Um, well, it's, it's going to go from Todd Township to.
Right, so that would be the correction is?
Yeah, so it'll, yeah, it'll become a Park Rapids number.
Yeah, okay.
Will, will the city be wanting to annex all of those on the west side of Western Avenue over there?
I think in the, in the future, it's quite possible, so. And, and that's so that they're, they already have, I believe, the, the utilities over there, but they're not hooked up. And I think as those residents request that, they will become City of Park Rapids. As, as that is my understanding, and then they would no longer be Todd Township.
And why are, why are we holding the hearing instead of the city?
Um, well, because that's how, that's, um, how I read the statute.
Okay, 'cause I don't recall, and maybe they have an annex since I was in the, oh, I don't recall.
We've had other annexations.
Have we?
Yes.
I'm just not remembering.
I think it was thirty-two oh six, and, and maybe that's, uh, maybe this is where I've come in my career here. Uh, because I don't think I did it in thirty-two oh six, and then Angi, uh, Angel is new. And so we've discussed it. Maybe they would do a public hearing for future ones? We, we can discuss that, or if you?
It doesn't matter to me, except it just seems like since it's a city issue.
Yeah, and, and we can go, we can review the, the statute further, and I, I was thinking that today too, is, you know, are, are we going to do a public hearing for each individual new annexation, if that's how it goes? And that's, that's not very convenient for you, nor is it reasonable, I don't.
Are you for the property owner?
No, no, and no, is, is anyone going to even come? I, I think it's a, possibly a waste of time for all of everyone included.
Problem is, uh, you can piecemeal annex as long as the property's abutting the city. If somebody that's not abutting the city wants to annex, it's a little different matter altogether. So the easy route is if it's abutting, it's pretty simple and cut and dry, but if that whole area wants to go in, it's a little different process.
Yeah, and, and this states the auditor shall serve notice of the hearing. So I, I took it to me.
Auditor, or could it be a city auditor?
City doesn't have an auditor. Auditor is the county official.
Okay.
But if the auditor approved, would? Could it, could it be a blanket hearing? I, I don't know.
Okay. Well, for today, should we set it at the next meeting in July?
It has to be at least ten days.
I, I think we need to actually set it for the second meeting in July.
Okay, that's fine.
Typically, publication is not less than ten days and not more than thirty days, so if we, if we say July second, ninth.
Sixteenth? That's the sixteenth.
At nine thirty?
July sixteenth at nine thirty? Then we should be able to meet the publication deadlines.
Don't believe I'll be here, uh, July second. I will, I will be on a, in Alaska.
You'll be somewhere else.
Me too. Not Alaska though.
Okay, so, um, do we need a motion for that, or is that just?
Yeah, we should have a motion to set the date for the public hearing.
Okay, Dave moves.
I'll second.
Tom seconds. All in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries. All right, thank you, Kay. Jeff?
I, the only update I have is, is that we were, we were having scheduling difficulty in getting the second EDA committing, meeting scheduled.
Oh, so you've still haven't done that yet, huh?
Haven't done that. We sent a doodle for this week, and there, A, there wasn't a time we could get our two, uh, Commissioners there at the same time, and, um, and then we sent a, a refresher, and I don't know, I found, when he sent the revised doodle poll and added more times, I found it really confusing to figure out that I had to go in and, and change my reply, so I'm wondering if we didn't get a bunch of, we didn't get better responses on that, or if people really were busy on Friday last week, but I've asked him to send a new doodle poll, and I'm hoping, um, Monday through Wednesday next week, I'm in the office Thursday and Friday, I'm gonna be on vacation, then Monday through Wednesday, the week after is the first, second, third of July, but you're leaving on the second, aren't you?
After the meeting, yeah.
After the meeting, so it would really be the first, okay, well, I'll, I'll try to, and.
I, I even figured out how, like you said, on the doodle poll to reopen it up.
Yeah, you had to reopen it.
And I opened, I put, I, I added a time between my, my twelve o'clock meeting yesterday and, and Bemidji and the four o'clock meeting I had here in Park Rapids, so I tried to squeeze in a fifth meeting yesterday, and it didn't quite go, but.
Yeah, so I, I wanna, I'm gonna, right after the meeting, I'll give him a call and then try to get that doodle sent out, and then we'll just say, uh, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday next week, or Monday, July first, as options, because then we wouldn't be excluding either of you.
I don't know. I've been prepared to answer, uh, 'cause two, two members asked me about the clarification on the, on the size of the, oh. Size of the board.
Yep.
Is there a time limit that they, this committee had to go and submit a recommendation?
I think it's sixty days. I'd have to go back and look, but. So we will, um, we're following up on that. Otherwise, uh, I would answer questions if anyone has them. We're just kicking off budget period, so. That'll all be coming out. I think you'll get your books first week of August.
And the year goes by fast.
Yep.
Yeah, how are we doing it again?
Okay, committee reports?
That's good, I just got one. Matt yesterday with a small group of people on the Lake Beltane water issue. Uh, discussed some potential language changes to work with the one watershed on that Crystal will be working on, and in the end, we came to the conclusion that we think it's best for, uh, Soil and Water Conservation District to try to put some sort of, uh, try to get the issue in the local water plan and come up with some sort of action plan, so we actually have a roadmap on how we might solve this problem and what's needed when. So Soil and Water's gonna be working on that, and, uh, the help of the county and the Lake Association. Um, so, we'll see where that goes. We're hoping the water plan has to be updated this year anyhow, so we're hoping to, you know, have some direction anyhow by the end of the year.
Are the Beltane lake owners satisfied with that, or are they still thinking this, uh, district idea?
They're, they're frustrated, 'cause, you know, they feel like they lost a year and a half because we waited on Crow Wing one watershed and only to arrive that nothing's really changed all that much, but.
I'm kinda frustrated that.
That's not entirely true, because if the language is in there that it's a problem, that, that could be helpful down the stretch, so. Um, but this kind of process just takes a while. In the meantime, I will add that the property where the, uh, where the original outlet was and the ditch that goes under eighty and under thirty-four, um, an individual bought that property and then, uh, made the drainage ditch area a permanent easement.
Oh, really?
So all the way to basically thirty-four is in a permanent easement now, where that was a problem before, 'cause previous owner didn't want anything to do with the, the plan, so.
So can, can he have that ditched out, or does that have to go through all this process, working with?
Well, you can't just arbitrarily divert water.
Yeah.
Even though.
Even the way it was that way.
At one time, they blocked it off, and you can, we went and looked at it. It's, it's blatantly obvious they, they blocked it off. So, yeah, kinda frustrating.
Is, is the lake back up high because all the rain?
Eight inches already, that's before this rain, so. Yeah, so they're, they're starting to get concerned.
Yeah, I still don't understand why it can't be a, a watershed issue, because high water levels are gonna affect the shoreline.
Well, Lynn said that, uh, you know, they had spent seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the years raising the causeway to the island, and it's like this far from the bridge again. And they can't raise it anymore. So that's pretty frustrating.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but, yeah, we had a good discussion, it's, we'll see where it goes, see what Crystal and her crew can do.
Well, it's nice that that permanent easement's in place now. I mean, that's one step forward.
Yeah, if, if that's even a viable route, you know, you'd still have to worry about, uh, the south side of thirty-four till, till it can get to the Crow Wings. But she did say she had some discussion with the landowners, and they seemed positive about it, because the ravine is still there.
Where, where is the ravine exactly?
You know, where, uh, Kenny's stories, the, the Trump store, basically.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And you got that right to the west, the Township Road.
Yep.
Right to the west of that.
Oh, okay.
If you drive by, you'll see where.
Okay.
The ravine kinda goes, and then it kinda migrates through there until the Township Road comes around on the south side. And then the Township Road is in the way of being able to go further, cross a few more properties to the lake.
Could the township put a culvert in, would that be a surprise?
You'd have to look at all that, I mean, you'd get to the point where somebody has to do a study and
Yeah.
See, see how that would work.
So is, is only coming out of Beltane, is that the only place it's been blocked off, so if that was actually made viable, the water would just then flow naturally?
Blocked off there, and of course, we don't know the history way, way back, but speculation was when thirty-four was built there that it blocked off other points where water used to flow too. You can kinda tell where, uh, where the wedding venue is, a little topography there, you know, when thirty-four was built, that was probably blocked out. Otherwise, there would have been natural flow into there too. So, yeah, all sorts of. And the lake bottom is pretty much sealed is the problem with silt, so every time the lake comes up, you know, it can perk into the new spot until that seals up, but then it has to go higher to perks, and then it has to go higher, and it just, the trend line, you know, if you just draw the straight trend line, it just keeps going up. So without some form of outlet, likely will continue to go up, at least the trend will. And so we have to figure out, at what point does the damage become, you know, overwhelming enough that justifies doing something. We can figure that out quantify that, and that's what Soil and Water will work on.
How about the lakes that are upstream that were having high water issues, or they still obviously having the issues, or?
They, they do too, you know, the, it's just that Beltane being at the bottom gets, gets the brunt of everything. But it goes up through, you know, the Spider Lake issue. That's why we didn't blow the Beaver Dam when the water was high before, 'cause it instantly would affect Beltane. Take it out when the water's low is the way to do it, and then it also goes all the way up the Mantrap Chain, and it'll affect all the way up to upper and lower bottle. You know, and for every person that doesn't want the water, others would want higher water, so I mean, there's always that.
And then the spring, there were lake accesses you couldn't get into because the water was too low.
Well, it's, just a few months difference now.
Yeah.
Yeah. But the trick is, you're not, you know, the, I've heard some rumors out there, that people saying, well, you're gonna drain, drain the lake. No, 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 no. All you're doing is protecting at a certain level from it going above that, that's all.
It's kinda like the dam on potato.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're just regulating how much water.
Right.
There. You're not taking water away unless it eclipses a certain level, man.
Kinda how Long Lake works, isn't it, with that thing over on eighty-seven?
Long Lake has been super stable ever since the dam went in.
Yeah.
You know, you, we might fluctuate on Long Lake by eight inches to a foot max throughout the whole year.
And that's the goal, is to not have those real highs or those real lows. Yeah.
Something like that on Beltane.
Yeah, but you know, they fluctuated as high as three feet.
Yeah.
Well, that's good news, even in the process, working slowly.
Mm-hmm. So I intend on being at the, uh, I think the Lake Association's meeting Saturday morning.
Okay.
Gonna attend that.
Great.
That's all I have.
Okay, Steve?
We had HRA yesterday, uh, at least a partial meeting, didn't stay real long, 'cause we had to be at the CBA. Um, I, I don't think there was anything significant, um, besides, uh, they sold the, the properties, um, and they're gonna look at using those funds to help the renovations that are necessary at the, at the two structures, um, a couple of them were pretty trashed. And they're trying to develop a, uh, policy to address that issue into the future, you know, there's no point fixing one up if it's just gonna get trashed again without any repercussions in some fashion, but it is difficult.
Yeah, 'cause it's hard to get.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, it is, so, um, really, that's, I can't think of anything else.
Let's see, um, we hit, the, the HRA did have a special meeting a week before that, and that was basically to approve signers for the, the sale of the three oh one Lake Street property and the nine oh one Charles Street property. Um, then there was, uh, to approve the easement on, uh, Finley Street for the, the, the apartments. Uh, Minnesota Energy. If I remember correctly, and Jeff can correct me, the, the.
If I remember correctly and Jeff can correct me, the, the original easement didn't have quite the right wording or something?
Minnesota Energy was not satisfied with the, with the easement language. And then we had the issues back and forth a little bit about the property descriptions to make sure they were accurate, so. Should be correct now.
So that was the special meeting. Then like uh Steve was saying, yesterday's meeting, um we just touched on some of the maintenance stuff. Now with the sale of these properties, we, I think we do have some funding to take care of some of those. And like Steve also mentioned, the one, both of the apartments, um the dollar figures are, are kinda staggering to fix them and it's, we're kinda questioning, how do they get to that point? You know, so I think with D W Jones on board now, it sounds like they do more inspections on a more of a regular basis. But how, how people can trash where you're living.
And then, and then there's no way they would get any money back.
To that extent, you know, I'd, I'd just shake my head. What do you do?
Um, did they get the H R A property out of the nine oh one before it closed? Out of the garage?
The, yep, um.
Good.
I, I, that was on the agenda. I believe the person who bought the property was gonna buy.
Oh, they were gonna buy that too? Okay, well, that takes care. We don't have to start or anything then. Okay.
I was just looking at the website too. They should update the, the board members.
Oh.
On the change.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, still got the.
And uh, and just since I just touched on H R A with Steve, that's all I have.
Really?
Yeah.
How unusual for you.
I've got some, you know, it was budget meeting with H R D C and budget meeting with the Mississippi Headwaters Board and uh that's the same thing. I looked at my, at my thing. It's like, well, you guys wanna hear about the numbers at H R D C or your numbers at Northwest Juvenile?
Yeah, we can thank Josh, yeah.
But yeah, and then Josh took over, so.
Tom, do you have anything?
Um, well, before I forget, um uh next board meeting, July second, I won't be able to be here.
Okay.
Even though I can supply an address, there's a seven hour time difference.
You don't wanna get up during the night?
Well, no, it, well, actually, uh your meeting's at nine o'clock in the morning. I did, it would be four o'clock in the afternoon where I'm at and.
Enjoy your time.
Yeah, I wanna, that's a time to be busy.
Yeah.
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 So I'm, I'm gonna be here for that meeting anyhow. I'm leaving afterwards, so we'll, we'll have four.
Okay, good. I don't have to worry about that one then. And then I had two meetings. It's kind of almost like Ted, you know, they just wanna get some, some numbers or something like that, but. One was um, was the Kitskamari Regional Library. It was a local board meeting this time. That once every, every other month, we have, they, they have a local board meeting too. It's, I'm on that. Mainly talking about uh getting the move back into the library and.
Do you have a date set for that?
No, I don't.
I just got an email.
You just got, okay.
They will be uh moving in, I believe Monday they're gonna be back in their regular location.
I had somebody ask me this. So if, if a person checks out books, they go online and then they put in the order and then they just pick them up here? Is that how that works in that time?
Four at the Book and Veal and they would be over at the park there.
Okay, alright. But now, since it's, it's gonna open on Monday, that'll be great.
The library will be here through Friday. They'll be open back on Monday and then they said they come back next week, Thursday, to take the rest of their stuff out of here.
Okay.
So they'll be out of here before the first of July.
That's, that's really been helpful. I, I know even, you know, naturally their numbers are gonna be down because they don't have the full library, but it's, it's been filling in for a lot of people. So that was nice. Um and then yesterday, uh we had the um Dancing Sky Region Council on Aging. I think the biggest thing that came out of that is that the twenty twenty-five budget for grants is gonna be down considerably because the ARP money is no longer available. So there's, they're gonna be scrambling on how to readjust for that, but they looked at the numbers and pre-COVID, the, the amount of funding that they'll have is gonna be about equal to that, so it's not like, you know, all this COV, ARP money has just been a, a bonus and they got cooked on. Now they gotta get back to where they were. In August, I'll be um part of a subcommittee that will be awarding grants. So I'll have that meeting in August.
Well, don't do what the state did.
What's that?
Well, there's, I can't remember the dollar figure for COVID money that was, was given out. And then they had the audit and found out, I mean, it's millions they gave out to places that should never have received.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I just have one um on Prime West. Um the, the hearing was before the Supreme Court. I actually listened to that. That was really interesting and I have to say that the, the attorney that was representing Prime West did an excellent job. He had everything covered. He had statutes covered. He, I mean, he just could spew out whatever they asked him. He knew very well. And so we have high hopes, but we'll wait and see how they um rule on that. Um the um, um net income this month was like six hundred and forty-three thousand this la- uh a month ago. But six hundred thousand of that was actually interest. And so year-to-date interest as of April thirtieth, um Prime West has made two million four hundred and sixty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars. They have all of their investments through um P M F, um Magic Fund.
P F M, Magic Fund.
Yep. And then one other interesting tidbit. So um from two thousand and seven to twenty twenty-three, Prime West has given back twenty-six million dollars in reinvestment grants for the communities. And so in July, when we hear about from the dental place and then go through that, that was one of the reinvestment grants that was given way back when. And then we talked about how, you know, you, the commercial plans always make big news about if they do something in a community. But if all the commercial plans that um handle Prime West members, or not Prime West, but members in Minnesota like Prime West does, if they had all given equal to what the twenty-six million equals for our budget, there would have been a total of six hundred and fifty million dollars given out. So Prime West is, is leading by far in reinvestment grants for communities. Our administration cost is at six point nine percent. All of their plans across Minnesota, uh the average is seven point eight and Blue Cross Blue Shield is at twelve point two for administrative costs. And I think that was it. We don't have a meeting in July, so. I had a conversation over the weekend with a member that works at Heritage. And um she just sang the praises of Stephanie over and over. And I, I asked her, you know, about Canute Nelson and Canute Nelson is fine, but she said really the morale changes and people wanting, are, you know, wanting to work there again and the residents being happy. She said, it's Stephanie. Yeah, so I thought that was really cool. Um, I'm gonna be gone next week, so someone needs to attend the manager's meeting for me. And then-
You had asked me last week if I'd go and I said yes.
Yeah, and then the, and one other probably, 'cause we usually have two there.
Oh.
And then-
And I was just there.
Okay. And then um I've been asked to be on the rural childcare.
So I guess it's me.
Yeah, okay. Um, the Rural Childcare Innovation Program. I'm gonna uh be on that with several other people from this area and I was wondering if we could add that to the committee list.
Is that, and that's through whom?
It's what?
Is, is it associated with another group?
It, well, it's, it's run by Mary Thompson because they got that grant and uh to study childcare and actually try to implement something here. And so if that would be okay with the board, I'd like to add that as a committee. I don't know how long it's gonna be going, but there'll be several different community members on it.
How's your level of uh committees that you're on?
Well, Ted took two of them, so I'm really actually open.
It's probably good to have, you know, divide it up.
Yeah, yeah. And so I, I think I'm actually lower now.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we'll probably review that again next year.
Yeah, that's fine, but this is a good fit for other things that I'm on. I just, um, last week I submitted my application through A M C. There, um, there's a statewide housing um panel. And they are having one rural commissioner and then one metro commissioner. And so I'll find out this week if I'm appointed or if a different rural commissioner's gonna be on. That's all I have.
I just had the answer to Commissioner Kruger's question. The E D A committee's report is due within ninety days of the first meeting.
So what, what's the date then? Would that be August sometime?
Yeah, we're, we're fine.
Okay.
Um, they can ask for an extension. We don't, we won't need an extension. Bruce emailed back and said he's sending a separate doodle poll. Try to get us scheduled.
Okay, does anybody have anything else? Okay, meetings to note. You can all note there and um you can go online if you're, care to attend any of those. Then I'll have a motion to adjourn.
I will.
I'm loose.
I'll second.
Steve seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.